Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for December 9th, 2013. Thanks to anybody who is waiting at 6:30 on the dot. Council had some in-camera business that we had to take care of prior to starting the meeting, so thank you for waiting for our council meeting to start, but I would call the meeting to order. And we'll start, as we always do, with our national anthem. I'd ask everyone to rise and show just singing "Old Canada." The National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'd move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt that set of minutes? Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes to the city council meeting being held November 25, 2013 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we wanted to catch before we adopt them? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Logan.
Yes, I would move that we adopt the agenda circulated with the addition of an item 8.5, public committee appointments.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So any discussion or debate on the agenda with that one addition of 8.5, the public committee appointments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on the agenda as amended. I'm looking for one more, counsel. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. This brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We ensure that we have an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and speak to council at every regular city council meeting. We want to ensure that the public is aware of this opportunity, and it doesn't look like we have anybody that's going to be coming forward this evening. As I said, we will be back at our next regular council meeting, and there will be another opportunity should anybody want to come and address council. We move on to public hearings and 6.1, Bylaw C-1260-4, a land use bylaw amendment. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Welton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're recommending that Bylaw C-1260-4, which is an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given second and third readings. When land use bylaw 1260 was adopted by council in September, administration indicated at that time the use of the bylaw would likely reveal a number of inconsistencies and errors that would need to be corrected through subsequent amendments. Bylaw 1260-4 proposes to fix a number of these issues that were identified in intervening months since the bylaw was adopted. These include such things as correcting cross-referencing and others, deleting extraneous texts, clarifying vague wording, and fixing an inconsistency between the text and the map. And I've attached a table that identifies each of the sections that are in the bylaw and the nature of the fix. Council may approve the bylaws as presented, amend it, and approve it, or defeat the bylaw. Municipal Government Act requires public hearing prior to second reading of any land use bylaw amendment, and advertising has been undertaken as required under the act. The proposed amendment aims to fix the issues and inconsistencies that were identified in the recently adopted land use bylaw, thereby making the bylaw clearer and more usable for the public. In summary, the proposed amendment fixes a number of issues that have been revealed through use of the new land use bylaw. Although the draft bylaw was reviewed extensively, it's only through day-to-day use that all such issues and errors can be identified for correction. Administration continues to use the new land use bylaw and identify any additional issues that may also present themselves. In addition, when the land use bylaw was adopted, council identified a number of specific issues and directed administration to reach, research, and bring forward recommendations for additional amendments to address those issues, and the review of those issues is underway. And further, on an ongoing basis, we will be identifying opportunities to enhance the organization and clarity of the land use bylaw to maximize its readability. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Any questions for administration at this time? Seeing none, I'd look to see if there are any presentation or submissions from the public. Anybody that'd like to speak in favor or support of this land use bylaw amendment? And anybody else that would like to come forward in opposition? The gallery's pretty empty, so I don't see anybody coming forward on either. I'll give one more opportunity for council if we had any questions for administration at this point. Seeing none, then I would close the public hearing and move on to business arising. Counselor Rice.
I move second reading of Bylaw C-1260-4 being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, for that motion for second reading. Of course, open for discussion and debate. Any discussion or debate on that motion for second reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice.
I move third reading of Bylaw C-1260-4 being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rice. And again, open for discussion and debate on third reading. Anybody ringing in for discussion or debate on this land use bylaw amendment, which essentially got a number of corrections and fixing of inconsistencies? I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. Don't believe we had any more public hearings. We had no unfinished business from last council meeting, so that takes us right into reports. Item 8.1, Bylaw C-1260-2, another land use bylaw amendment. Maybe a brief introduction from administration before we move on to first reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an application to amend the land use bylaw. We are recommending that city council give C-1260-2 first reading and establish Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time, and location for the public hearing. An application has been submitted to rezone lot 3B, block 3, plan 992-5877, and part of lot 3, block 3, plan 902-2150, from local commercial CL to medium-density residential. Municipal Government Act requires council to hold a public hearing prior to given second reading. Advertising will be completed in accordance with the act. The subject parcels are located on the south side of 84th Avenue to the west of Mission Heights Drive. The parcels are presently vacant and are currently zoned local commercial. Directly to the west of the subject parcel is a forestry apartment building, zoned multifamily residential, medium-density, while to the east, a gas station and convenience store are local commercial. The owner of the subject property is requesting to amend the land use bylaw to rezone the property from CL to RM. Administration recommends that Bylaw C-1260 be given first reading and Monday, January 13th, 2014 be the date for the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Welton. So I would look for a motion for first reading. Counselor Clayton.
I make a motion that first reading be given to Bylaw C-1260-2 and that council establish Monday, January...
Sorry, Counselor Clayton, we'll do the first. We've got to do this in two parts, don't worry. So a motion for first reading, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion for first reading carries. Now we can establish the date, time, and location that everybody's agreed to have first reading, and so it's basically in process. Now we can figure out when we're going to do the other readings. Counselor Clayton.
I make a motion that council establish Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 6:30 in council chambers as the date, time, and location for a public hearing of Bylaw C-1260-2.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So motion for date, time, and location is debatable as to the relevance of the date, time, and location. Any discussion or debate on the proposed date, time, and location of this public hearing? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That takes us to 8.2, Bylaw C-1087-09, excuse me, the Northeast Area Structure Plan Amendment, the West Carriage Lane and Crystal Landing Outline Plans, and Bylaw C-1260-1, a land use bylaw amendment. I'd look to Mr. McIntyre for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The amendments we have under this item is...
To the Northeast Area Structure Plan, as your report indicates. Corresponding amendments to the land use bylaw, C-1260-1, and these are intended to enable changes to the West Carriage Lane and the Crystal Landing Outline Plans. The recommendation is that the two bylaws, 108709 and 1260-1, each be given first reading, and that Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. at city council chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearings. For a little bit of background, city engineering services initiated these amendments to the Northeast Area Structure Plan and ultimately to the Carriage Lane Outline Plan, the Crystal Landing Outline Plan, and the zoning that affects those properties in order to accommodate future all-directional signalized intersection at 100th... Sorry, 100th Avenue to be moved 100 meters north of 100th Avenue. So there is a map. I don't know if Ms. Turney can... Or IT staff can put it up? No. It's from the report? Nope, okay. I'll just have to ask council to refer to the page 16 of your report, attachment 1, if you would, just to... Or in fact, if you go back to... Okay, so we can't use the projector, is what you're saying? Okay. Mayor Given, just to kind of compensate for the...
There it is, just first reading.
Okay, then I'm going to trust a counselor generally familiar with the location, and if you're satisfied with that, then the recommendation is, as I indicated, first reading for 1087-09, first reading for C-1260-1, and the public hearing date on January 13th, as the report recommends.
Mr. McIntyre? So I'd look for a motion for first reading. We have to do a couple of first readings, and then we can do date, time, and location. I see first in the queue is Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that the first reading be given to Bylaw C-1087-09 being amendment to the Northeast Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. First readings are not open for discussion debates. We'll call for the vote. Thank you, I'm looking for one more. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that first reading be given to Bylaw C-1261 being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Sure, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Just for clarity, 1260-1 rather than 1261. Any... Sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Counselor McLean, date, time, and location.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council establish Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. at city council chambers as the date, time, and location for public hearings of Bylaw C-1087-09 and Bylaw C-1260-1.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion as to date, time, and location of that proposed public... Those proposed public hearings? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We move on to 8.3, Bylaw C-1290-A, Medeville Area Structure Plan Amendment, and Bylaw C-1260-3, Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Mr. Welton, wow, you guys just changed seats over there pretty quickly. It's musical chairs. Mr. Welton.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're recommending that Bylaw C-1290-A, which is amendment to the Medeville Area Structure Plan, and C-1260-3, which is amendment to the land use bylaw, be given first readings on Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. Be established as the date and time in city council chambers as the location for the public hearings. Aristolanders Ketchum, on behalf of the landlords, have submitted an application to amend the Medeville Area Structure Plan and the land use bylaw. The proposed amendment would change the ASP designation and the zoning change of part of Lot 1, Block 3, Plan 1026206 from medium-density residential to small-lot residential in the area that's... Sure enough, if you've seen it on the map. The site is located at the northeast corner of 84th Avenue and Willow Drive in Riverstone. The applicant has also submitted an application to amend the Riverstone Outline Plan, which was adopted by council resolution, not by bylaw, and therefore does not require a formal public hearing. Therefore, the OP amendment application will be submitted to council for consideration prior to second reading of Bylaw C-1290-A and C-1260-3. And advertising and surrounding owner notification of the public hearing and outline plan amendment will be undertaken as required. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. So I'd look for a motion for first reading. Thank you very much, Counselor Rice.
I move first reading of Bylaw C-1290-A, an amendment to the Medeville Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So as with before, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice.
I move first reading of Bylaw C-1260-3 being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Again, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, date, time, and location.
I move that council establish Monday, January 13th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. at city council chambers as the date, time, and location for the public hearings of Bylaw C-1290-8A... I mean, 90-8A and Bylaw C-1260-3.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion as to date, time, and location of those proposed public hearings? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I believe that handled all of our first reading business. We did have a couple of other items under reports. The first was 8.4, Mayor's Recommendation Committee Appointments. I'll just very briefly speak to this, and then I'll actually pass it on to legislative services managers just to identify the specifics. Council received a list of some appointments to our external agencies, boards, and commissions. There were a couple of oversights when we did this at council's organizational meeting, which necessitated a couple of changes, and so Audrey, I'll just maybe ask you to highlight those changes so council's aware of them, because the list that's there only had a couple of changes, and so Audrey, you could highlight that. That'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The changes that you will notice is on the board... Sorry, my apologies. I've got all these all mixed up now. Sorry, on the Scores Committee and on the absence that we had neglected to include the Grand Prairie Area Recreation Board and an appointment for that. And those are the only two changes, Mayor Given. Thank you.
Counselor McLean, I believe I'd originally appointed you to the Scores Committee upon a little bit of further looking. Administration identified that it's actually the mayor that sits there along with the chairs of the school boards, and so that's why I'm going to be taking that one on. Sorry to be taking that committee away from you. The other one... The other one was the Grand Prairie Area Recreation Board. This is actually County of Grand Prairie Committee. In the past, I had sat on that at the county's appointment, I guess, but they, this time around, specifically asked the City of Grand Prairie for an appointee, and so that's why the other change. So that's what necessitated those two changes. So I would ask for a motion to adopt the recommendations as presented. Somebody could make that motion. Counselor Rice.
I move that council approve the committee appointments as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and I believe that takes us to our additional item, 8.5, Public Member Appointments to Committees. And Counselor Clayton, I believe you're going to handle that.
This is June Nick.
I believe Counselor Clayton, you're going to handle that piece of business for us.
I move that council approve the following appointments to boards and committees. Arts Development Committee, Adrian Teszanyak... Tenasachuk to the Arts and Development Committee for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. The Assessment Review Board, Fletcher Bootle and John A. Crokin be appointed to the Assessment Review Board for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. For the Competitive Sports Commission, we have Marc Fournier, Darren Metzler, and Jennifer Kroker to be appointed to the Competitive Sports Commission for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. The Grand Prairie Airport Commission, the appointment of Wade Greentry and Linda Murphy appointed to the Grand Prairie Airport Commission for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. The Grand Prairie Public Library Board, we have appointed Susan Banzgrove and Maura Good for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. The Pursuit of Excellence Committee, we've appointed Pamela Chislet and Jeff Campbell to a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. For the Subdivision and Development Appeal Board, we have appointed Cassidy McDonald, Richard Kieselbach, and Ray Savage for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. And for Take Part, Take Pride Committee, appointed Jason Zelling for a one-year term ending in December 31st, 2014. As well, we have appointed Stephanie Walkers, Cheryl Weaver, Tracy Carter, and Doug Friesen for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton, for that list. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation? Seeing nobody, I would just take a moment to thank all of those people who volunteered. I believe we have had good results over the last number of years with people volunteering for the city committees. Certainly appreciate the fact that there are so many members of our community that are looking to get involved by volunteering in this way. It's unfortunate, obviously, that we don't have spaces for everybody, but we certainly appreciate the fact that there are so many people who are willing to step up and serve their community by letting their name stand for these appointments. If there's no other discussion and debate, I'll call for the vote on those appointments. Thank you. That motion carries and takes us into committee business, I believe. We'll start with 9.1, Council Committee of the Whole 2014 Budget Review. Motion for that set of minutes. Counselor Thiessen.
I move that council receive the minutes of the Council Committee of the Whole 2014 Budget Review held November 15th, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that settlement? Any errors or omissions? Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I have a couple, and so I'll get Audrey or whomever to help with these. So bring your attention to 2.4.3, please. 2.4.3. Seems to be hanging there without a vote or without any... Like, what's the action after that? I don't recall what happened to that item, that's why I'm wanting to get out.
So the road project, 101st Avenue, 98th Street, 97A Street? Ms. Turney.
Given, if you take a look at the motion, after 2.3 and 2.4, they're combined into one motion.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Radburn.
And 2.49, please.
2.4.
So the second move by Counselor Logan, the 2014 capital budget be adjusted to add $100,000, and then moved by Counselor Clayton. I guess we... Did we vote on the Counselor Logan motion? Oh, for reviewing and planning, I think Dwight, your... That motion was, so it's a little different, but what was the outcome of that motion?
Ms. Turney.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The motion that Counselor Logan made to add the $100,000 was not voted on because the matter was unanimously carried to refer the matter of funding to an appropriate standing committee, so there was no action on the matter of additional funds.
Okay. Counselor Radburn, sorry.
So that's good. I think usually that we put that in, so people reading the minutes, in terms of being referred to a committee or something, usually that's part of the minutes. That's it.
Was there anything else? No, thanks very much for going through those, Counselor Radburn. Certainly want to ensure that they're as clear as possible. Was there any other discussion or debate on that set of minutes from the budget review? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Can I have a motion to adopt the 2014 operating budget? Counselor McLean.
Counselor adopt the 2014 operating budget.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Discussion or debate on the recommendation? Council's budget review was livestreamed and was recorded, and so members of the public and the media obviously had an opportunity to see that. Is there any other discussion or debate, anything that any council members wanted to highlight? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries, and then we need a motion for the capital budget. Counselor Radburn.
Move that council adopt the 2014 capital budget.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that recommendation to approve the capital budget for 2014? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Take us on to 9.2, Community Growth Committee from November 26th, and Counselor O'Toole, I believe you handled that meeting?
Mayor Given. I'd like the council to receive the minutes of the Community Growth, held on November 26th.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to catch? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, I think there was a motion coming out of that committee?
Yes, I've got 9.2.1, City of Grand Prairie Position on the Extended Producer Responsibility, and I could go through the whole report, but I'd like to forward this to our Community Growth person today, Michelle Gartner, and she can give you the Reader's Digest version so everybody on TV can understand what's going on.
Counselor O'Toole, maybe I'll just get you to make the motion, just so it's sort of on the table, and then we'll fast over to administration.
I recommend that council strongly support the proposed change to Alberta's regulatory framework for recycling designated materials.
Thanks very much for that, Counselor O'Toole, and Ms. Gardner, I think you're going to give us...
Thank you, Mayor Given. The motion was to... The Alberta Environment is doing a survey to look at extending producer responsibility on recycling materials in the province of Alberta. So that will mean that they'll have programs put into place if this framework is accepted by the government. We are looking to see that... We met with the county and aquitara. We are looking to see that, we met with the county and Aquaterra, and we are using the word strongly suggest because that is the option that they have in the survey. So it's not that we, it's, you have an agree or strongly agree, so that was how we chose to answer that question.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gardner. So any highlights that you wanted to pull out of the report for the position? I know council members received it in their committee package.
There, it will look at doing things like printed paper and packaging so that that will have an end, there's an end-of-life program for that that is not necessarily just for communities to have to pay for programs, so the producers will have to pay for that. It will help to increase some levies, so for example windshield, wiper, fluid, the containers will be, have a fee levied on them.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gardner. And Counselor O'Toole.
Just one more comment. Alberta has the highest waste disposal rate in Canada, and in 2010, we sent about 4 million tons of waste to Alberta landfills. This translates to about 1,050 kilograms of waste per person compared to the Canadian average of about 729 kilograms. So this is going to make a big impact on our landfill sites.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything else that you want to highlight from that set of minutes? Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We move on to the Community Living Committee from November 26. And Counselor O'Toole, did you handle that, too? You had back-to-back meetings in the same day? No? Counselor Radburn? Okay. Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held November 26, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we needed to catch at this point before we adopt them? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you, council. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council approve the request for increased 2014 operational funding in the amount of $15,131 for the Grand Prairie Public Library. Committee received delegation from our library director, Maureen Currie, at our committee meeting and agreed to bring it forward. This is a request that came in. This would, I guess, enable the library to increase salaries to their staff of about 3.5%. And as presented, this would be, this was needed to maintain competitive salaries for library staff relative to other similar-sized municipalities. I believe that that information was sent around to council, and council had received that information. Maureen actually is here, if there are any more detailed questions that council may have, but that's the gist of the request. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor O'Toole? Counselor O'Toole, is your microphone on?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to be voting in favor of this, and I strongly encourage my fellow councilmen to, and councilpeople, to go forward with this as well.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? If I recall correctly from the information that was circulated, this is not so much about maintaining competitive wages as it is ensuring that we don't slip further behind, just so that that point is very specific and clear. It wasn't about being at the top of the pack, it was about getting somewhere just slightly above the bottom. And so I certainly want to clarify that. Counselor Radburn? Sorry, Counselor Radburn, there you go.
Would help us to attract and retain employees.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn, I think you had one other motion coming out of that committee.
I do, thank you. I would move the council approve the sponsorship of $10,000 from the Recreation and Sports Budget, $7,000 cash, and $3,000 gift and kind for the 2014 Senior Men's Provincial Fastball Championships and Senior Men's and Women's Western Canadian Fastball Championships. So again, we're supporting this level of sponsorship, similar to what we did with the Canadian Native Fastball Championships. Our group were very active in advocating and getting the opportunity to host these events, and Kirsten felt that, looking at the budget, there was some flexibility there for the cash, and the $3,000 would be things like sometimes facility support in terms of moving equipment around, those kind of things, and actually some staff support, too, since she in particular, but others have some expertise that can help the organizing committee. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Open for discussion and debate. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
To Counselor Radburn, I know in the fastball native championships, how much they projected in thousands of individuals, I don't know if I misplaced it or read it, what are they expecting for the turnout from the tournaments?
Counselor Radburn, your microphone went off.
Did we get that?
I think 16 teams, Kevin, so it's not as many teams as the native fastball, but I think eight and eight.
Okay.
With the numbers of teams, there's still a significant number of people coming to our facility, and therefore, yeah. There'd be some, certainly some economic impact to hosting the tournament.
I think from the presentation, the other part was that this is essentially two tournaments. So if we're comparing with the previous, there was a single tournament with a larger total number of teams. This is essentially two tournaments that are happening, although it's a smaller number of teams. Any further discussion or debates? Questions or comments? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn, anything else you want to highlight?
Just one, just quickly, we did talk about George Repka Award Criteria nomination process, and that's, there will be a review and a report will come to a future committee meeting. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. We move on to the 100th Anniversary Committee from November 27. And I think Counselor Rice, that was your committee?
I move council receive the minutes of the 100th Anniversary Committee meeting held November 27.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, is there anything that you want to say about the 100th Anniversary, given that it's, I mean, we're, this is our last regular city council meeting before the
This is our last meeting before, so yes, I have a lot, some of the highlights will be May 22, the Innovation Conference, and I'm sure most people know that Grand Prairie has received more permits, patent permits, per capita than any other place in North America. So it's befitting, we have an innovation conference. Then, of course, in July, 24th, 25th, 26th, we'll be celebrating 100 years of transportation, and Counselor O'Toole has set that up. And of course, the August homecoming weekend, which should be quite exciting, but what I really want to highlight is New Year's Eve at Musquessee Park for the grand kickoff. It's going to be an excellent no-charge family event that will start at 7:00 with a welcome speech. There will be an ice sculpture display, and it will feature the 100th Anniversary logo. And the primary sponsor for this evening is Aquaterra, so the ice sculpture will also have Aquaterra's logo. There'll be free hot chocolate and anniversary cake in the pavilion. There'll be a sled dog run, and we're hoping ride, so if you ever wanted to ride in a sled, a family sleigh ride, there'll be four sleighs with horses. And you get a chance to see Aquaterra's special events trailer. There's a giant screen TV on the side of it, which will have a slideshow, past and present pictures of Grand Prairie. They're working with the museum to get those pictures. Hopefully, there will be a giant bonfire, a family skate on the pond, and of course, music will be playing, and a spectacular fireworks display, and a, an appearance by a special guest, Dwayne Steele, will be coming down to join us and kickoff what we think is going to be an extremely exciting year.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Certainly appreciate all the work that the committee has done on the 100th Anniversary, and looking forward to a big year in 2014. Thank you very much. So move on to 9.5, the Community Safety Committee from December 3. Counselor Radburn, I believe that was your committee?
Thank you, yes. Just acting chair as Counselor McLean was away. All right, so first of all, I move council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held December 3, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council locate $125,000 from an unallocated basic grant to the 100th Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Capital Project. Administration brought forward, I guess, some information relative to this project. It needed a little more work than initially felt it was needed. I guess as you get into these projects, these things become, I guess, aren't always known at the start. And so this was, we used some contingency money, but we need still $125,000 to complete the project. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council direct administration to implement the attached criteria as per Schedule A to determine priorities for installation of new sidewalks and pathways, including an amendment to Criteria IV. And further, that administration provide a results report once the community mobility connectivity map is complete. So we have not had criteria to date in terms of when we're looking, where we should put new sidewalks and pathways. I think committee felt this was a good initiative and provided some criteria by which administration can use to, I guess, to recommend the priority of certain projects. The, just for our audience, the criteria were road classification, area classification, school route connects to, and that was the change that was mentioned, Criteria IV, and it used to say city facility, but really it's public facility. Desire line in brackets, go trail, which just means that people are walking there anyway, so maybe we can learn from that. Trail use connects to bus stop, right-of-way availability, and is there existing sidewalk or pathway on the other side of the road. So the motion, I guess, allows us to operationalize and use these, and then once we get the community mobility connectivity map, then they can use those criterias to see gaps in that connectivity plan, and in that way, I guess, determine priorities.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ring in, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor Radburn, anything else you want to highlight?
Actually, five, we had a full agenda. So first of all, we did receive a couple of delegations with respect to snow removal routes. Committee chose to just receive that for information. Committee, majority of committee felt that we should, I guess, use what we have for this winter and not make one-off decisions until we get the big picture at the end of the winter. We had a subdivision approval for a direct control district. Stepping Stones Daycare, the report really identified that we've worked with them, and we're going to try a drop-off zone as a pilot to determine the effectiveness. And so Stepping Stones is 101st Street between 108th, 109th avenues, and that was a solution that worked with them, rather than, didn't really have the numbers to warrant a crosswalk, et cetera. And so this is just a pilot, and we're going to see if it's effective, and administration will bring back that information at a later time. 92nd Street signage, that deals with lane control at certain periods of the day, there's different lanes available, and they brought a suggestion, but it didn't do the trick from the perspective of the committee, so we've asked them to go back and redesign some other signage, and bring that back. And hospital area parking meetings, we got the first part of the report, and that report really spoke to the feasibility of paid parking on residential streets surrounding the hospital. Bottom line, the fees, the information said, yeah, it is feasible, but there's another piece of this puzzle, and that's the capacity and what kind of parking we need, and that report will be brought back at a later date as well, and then we can look at moving forward with some of the recommendations. So this was a for-information update. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn, for highlighting those for us. Move on to the Corporate Services Committee from December 3. And Counselor Logan, I believe that was your meeting? Sorry, Counselor Logan, we'll just get you to hit your microphone there and make the motion so those, our viewers at home can hear us.
My dulcet tones weren't audible. I'd like to move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held December 3.
Very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions, things out of order that we need to catch? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
The next piece of business is to consider bylaw C1138E being a tax discount and penalty bylaw, and bringing it forward to council for three readings, if that's acceptable to council, we'll find that out in a minute. So I'd like to move that first reading be given to bylaw C1138E being the tax discount and penalty bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So motion for first reading, of course, is up for debate, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
I'd like to move that second reading be given to bylaw C1138E being the tax discount and penalty bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate. Any questions, comments, discussion on this recommendation? Counselor Logan, if I remember correctly, this is actually increasing the discount rates for, that we give to residents who prepay their property tax, is that correct?
That's right. I would consider this to be a positive change to the bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Too bad, because we could have had Ken Anderson get back in the water here on that motion with some hard questions. Instead, I'd like to move the council have third reading of bylaw C1138E.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So motion to have third reading here tonight, of course, to have third reading of any bylaw at the same meeting where it was first introduced, we must have this motion, and it must be passed unanimously, otherwise the item would come back at a future council meeting. And I believe the intention of administration here was to ensure that this was done before year-end, so that these tax discounts could be applied for the 2014 year. So any discussion or debate on having third reading? Counselor O'Toole? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote on having third reading. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can, can have third reading. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would move that we give third reading to bylaw C1138E, the tax discount and penalty bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. And that motion carries will remind people that if you feel like paying all of your municipal property taxes upfront in 2014, it could save you a quarter of a percentage point, if I remember correctly, what we moved them up to, so rush in and make sure that you do that. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would, we had the discussion on three policies, 331, 338, and 324, on the Future Expenditures Reserve, on the Financial Stabilization Reserve, and the Public Housing Reserve, so three reserves. I'd like to move each of those individually, so it starts by I'd like to move each of those individually, so we'll start by asking council to approve policy 331, the Future Expenditures Reserve.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. And councillor Logan, if I'm remembering correctly, this was essentially ensuring that the policies, each of these recognized that interest that grew in that reserve was retained within the reserve, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that recommendation, that motion on policy 331? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Motion carries. Councillor Logan?
Yes, I would like to move that council approve policy 338, the Financial Stabilization Reserve.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion on this reserve? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councillor Logan, one last policy.
I'd like to ask council to approve policy 324 being the Public Housing Reserve, and this, along with the earlier motions, presents a fairly sound financial package for the city administration. I think that's good work that was done.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Councillor Logan, anything else that you wanted to highlight for that set of minutes?
No, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's the information that we asked to come forward.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Seeing nobody ringing in, then we'd move on from our committee business. I don't believe we had any items of correspondence, didn't have any delegations join us tonight. We had no notice of motion, and so let take us council member reports. And councillor Logan, actually, I think I guess we'll be staying with you with Peace Library System, you said you had had a meeting?
That's right, I attended the first meeting of this term with the Peace Library Board. I was familiar with the written information on the board, this was the first time I actually attended a meeting, and pleased to be appointed to that board. Peace Library System is basically a consortium of municipalities and library boards, and one or two oddities also thrown in, that are gathered together to increase access to both written material and audiovisual material throughout the whole of northwestern Alberta, a huge area to cover with a sparse population in some areas. The membership in the board was made up of a representative from each library in each municipality, so we had in the area of over 40 people there, coming out on a horribly icy day. And it was a very strong learning curve. I think this is a tremendous system, and I think it's doing a tremendous job, so thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. I think that'll take us to council member reports. Councillor Logan, your microphone's on, so maybe we'll start from there, and we'll go clockwise around the room to councillor Thiessen next.
Happily for everyone, I have nothing more to report.
Thanks very much councillor Logan. Councillor Thiessen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I had the opportunity on November 27th to join in with the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance for our first meeting out there. It was a very long day, very full, and I got to meet the other council and board members there. It was an interesting day, sitting on the communications board with Shell Gardner, as well as a few of our other board members with Mighty Peace. So it was an incredible day of learning about what the Mighty Peace Watershed has to offer for our people, and how we intend to grow through that, and also lobby for its health and wellness. So I was very fortunate to be a part of that, and I look forward to continued involvement with the Mighty Peace. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Thiessen. Councillor O'Toole?
My committee meetings are going to be coming up here fairly soon. This week is actually pretty solid, so I can give you a little bit of a rundown on what I've done in the last few weeks. On November 27th, I did attend the Airport Commission meeting, it was more of a Christmas social. There was some discussion prior to the social regarding growth and including runway enhancements, which will be taking place in this 2014 year. Also, on the 28th, I attended a council team building out in Beaver Lodge, we also met with Beaver Lodge council that day. On the 28th, I attended a tender opening here at City Hall. And on the 30th, I helped Santa with the Christmas staff party. He was looking for somebody that was about his stature, so he phoned me up. Also, that evening, I attended the Disabled Transport Society Staff Christmas Party, it was for the office staff dispatcher and the board of directors, and it went off very well. It was a very cold and stormy day, but we made it happen. On December 3rd, I made a proclamation reading on behalf of the mayor and council for the International Day of Peoples with Disabilities. It was held at the East Link Centre, and a number of students from St. Joe's School participated in some wheelchair activities, and we had some notable people from the community help participate in that event. Met with members of the United Way and city staff later that night in regards to the poverty reduction simulation at the Palmeroy Hotel the following day. And the following day, December 4th, it was about a four-and-a-half-hour day where we simulated being a person that had just lost a job and had to deal with the reality of trying to get money and find a job, not necessarily in Grand Prairie, but is a situation where trying to deal with different agencies and coordination. So it opened up a lot of eyes, including myself, on the difficulties, and what you would think that would be quite easy to accommodate, it's not always that way. Later that night, I attended the Scores Annual Holiday Meeting and met with some of the different school board people that were newly elected, and it was a good event to see those people and chat and reminisce with some of the prior council members. On the 5th, I attended the GP Volunteer Breakfast, and I also attended the Red Cross Open House later that afternoon. On the 6th, I met with Honorable Rick MacIver, Minister of Transportation, at that particular time. Later on the day, he had a portfolio change. But later on, in the evening, I drove out to Wanham Cocoa Hall to celebrate the 100 years of being a county, and that would be the county of Birch Hills. I presented a gift and spoke on behalf of the mayor and council. I didn't stick around for the fireworks, it was minus 38. And today, I'm proud to say, I went to the Kids' Place at Debar Arena and read a book, listened to a little Christmas music, which the students, I guess you could call the play schools, kids, students, do a little Christmas concert for me, and I'd just like to thank Mrs. Bryan and Mrs. Dorian. Thank you very much. That's my report for the last two weeks.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Councillor Clayton?
One small thing, that was a great opportunity on December 1st, I had an opportunity to, with council, to be part of the Santa Claus Parade. It was a great day, great turnout, it was in horrible weather. So thank you to everyone who had an opportunity to see the parade and to participate, because it wasn't the best day and the best weather, but the spirits were warm, so that was great. And I also attended the meeting with the Minister of Transportation, as well as Minister of Infrastructure. There was great discussion around the room, fortunately, they were both there, so the swap happened, but they were both in the conversation, so I look forward to working with both of them in their new roles, and that's all I have to report.
Clayton, councillor Terrence?
On the 27th, I was able to attend my first Airport Commission meeting, and it was great to meet some of the members there and learn a little bit about what the airport does behind the scenes, and had a great time. On the 28th, we had our council team building, it was good to get to know each other a little bit more, learn a little bit more about our personalities, our strengths and weaknesses. It was a great time, and we did survive the epic Survivor challenge we encountered. It was good. Well, some of us. On the 4th, I went to Reach FM, they had their sixth anniversary, had an open house there, so was able to go and celebrate with them. Attended the PACE Open House and got to learn a little bit more about their programming, and a little bit more about the services they provide to the community. On the 5th, I attended the Grand Prairie Volunteer Bureau Proclamation and the breakfast there, and the mayor proclaimed the day, and it was a great, well-attended event, and it was great to see Ogeni be awarded the Volunteer of the Year award. And at lunch that day, I attended the Chamber of Commerce AGM, and it was good to see some new board members appointed there, and I look forward to working with the organization. And this Saturday, we had a great time at the city Christmas party, so kudos to everyone that planned that, and it was a lot of fun.
Mr. Terren, councillor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. November 27th, I attended my first downtown association board meeting, enjoyed that thoroughly. 28th, I also attended the team building session in Beaver Lodge and meeting with council out there. Santa Claus Parade on December 1st, the PACE Open House, and the Scores Kind Holiday Supper Social. On the 4th, on the 5th, Volunteer Services Bureau Volunteer of the Year and Corporate Volunteer of the Year, plus the proclamation. And then the Red Cross Open House in their new location. And in the evening, I attended the Volunteer Services Bureau 30th Anniversary Reception and brought greetings and spoke on behalf of Mayor Given and council. Also, Pursuit of Excellence meeting, and Grand Prairie, on the 6th, I went to the Grand Prairie Guild of Artists 30th Anniversary Art Exhibition, the opening was at the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie. And I also attended the city Christmas party on the 7th. Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Mayor Given, November 28th, I attended with the rest of council, a team building in Beaver Lodge. The highlight of it is not just with our council, but also with the council of Beaver Lodge. They have an announcement that they want to make soon, but they won't let us know what that announcement is, so they got something there that's going to be a good announcement, I believe, for the community, and I look forward to it. As well, on December 1st, I attended the Santa Claus Parade downtown, and I kept asking my daughters, is this still on, is it still on? And it was, so they go through it no matter how cold it is. It was cold that day, and I'm glad to see it was well-attended as well for how cold it was. And last week, I was out of country for a prior commitment in August, and I want to thank councillor Edburn for filling in on community safety, and councillor Clayton for filling in on Pursuit of Excellence. Thank you.
Councillor McLean? So I'll try to cover some of the items that hadn't been covered previously. On November 27th, I was on line for a conference call regarding Bill 28 and the changes that the government introduced to that bill. Certainly appreciate the dialogue that happened with the government and municipalities, and certainly appreciate the changes that were introduced. I believe it addressed any concerns that any municipality generally should have had, and appreciate the direction that that went. Later that day, I had an opportunity to have a brief visit with representatives from Enbridge Northern Gateway Pipeline. They were in the city to update the community advisory board on the progress. They're looking for, I think, some direction from the committee that it's at early in 2014, and then in their hope, final approval or go-ahead from the federal government mid-year or by 2015. And so obviously, will have significant impacts on Alberta's economy as a whole, and certainly the local economy here. On 28th, as was mentioned by other council members, I also attended the council team building session and meeting with Beaver Lodge Town Council. And on the 1st, of course, I was with the other members of council at the Santa Claus Parade, I want to thank our QP members who were there during the day as well, manning the barricades and ensuring that everybody had a safe Santa Claus Parade. And I want to thank Jody from our city staff, who ensures that council is always well-stocked. This year, we're handing out hot chocolate, which on a cold day like that, I think was welcomed, even if people were only getting the packet and they had to take it home and heat it up themselves, they really appreciated the idea, I think. So thank you, Jody, very much for all your organizing to make sure that council is well-prepared for those parades. On Wednesday, the 4th, I also attended a Scores meeting, wasn't able to stay for the holiday get-together, but appreciated the opportunity to get together with the other partners in the Scores Agreement, the two school boards, sorry, three school boards, the public, Catholic, and Francophone school boards, and the Grand Prairie Regional College are partners with the city of Grand Prairie in that agreement, which is really sort of best-in-class across the province. On Thursday, the 5th, I was also at the Volunteer Services Bureau for the proclamation and Volunteer of the Year announcements. I was also at the Chamber of Commerce AGM that day at lunch, and that afternoon, also attended the Red Cross Open House and ribbon cutting. Great to see the Red Cross move into a new facility that supports their medical equipment loan program and their emergency programs by the easy access that they have to more storage in the back of the facility, very important with them, for them. On the morning of Friday, the 6th, I had an opportunity to discuss with an interesting group that has a position in the MGA review. Two white papers were released from the Building Owners and Managers Association of Alberta. They had two white papers, one looking at taxation issues, having to do with the MJ, and another that was looking at planning and municipal and regional planning. I was really interested to see that an organization like this had taken an interest in the MJ, and so followed up to discuss their positions a little bit more in detail with them. Later that day, I had an opportunity to meet with the Minister of Transportation, Rick MacIver, who was in the city, and of course, Wayne Drysdale, the Minister of Infrastructure. Later that afternoon, I had the opportunity to recognize that they changed places, so with Wayne now being Transportation Minister and Rick now being Infrastructure Minister. Councillor Clayton mentioned afterwards, well, at least Wayne was in the room, so he heard all of our concerns about Highway 43 and Highway 43X bypass, so he's got a head start as Transportation Minister. But certainly want to congratulate Minister Drysdale on his reappointment to cabinet and that important position. And also want to thank all the organizers of the city Christmas party. A lot goes into ensuring that city staff from all the different departments are able to come together. It was great to see that so many staff are participating, I think we had about 350 staff. And the reason that I bring that up is because it really is an opportunity for people that work for our organization in such diverse service areas to come together and realize that they're all engaged on behalf of serving the community. So we had people from our CMP members, to firefighters, to people that are on graders, to people who build signs, to people who work in home support, and all other sorts of areas. And I just think it's a great opportunity for us to recognize what type of organization we work for and our colleagues. And today was the start of Seasons Greeting Deliveries, where the city manager and I go and visit every city facility and deliver a small thank you to staff there, recognize them for their work throughout the course of the year. So the city manager and I, if you look at us at the start of the new year, and you have to roll us into council chambers, it's probably because of the three or four days of these Citizens Greeting Deliveries, where we enjoy shortbread cookies and other things with staff and all the different city venues. That's all I have to report, and thank you very much for listening, and this is our final meeting for 2013. Wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season, and look forward to everyone joining us again in 2014. And we'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you.